Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Cablecast Public Hearing for Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. My name is Ashley Robinson and with us today is Nick Miller, our sign language interpreter. The public hearing will be on the following legislation. Bill 2019, 1995, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title IX, Zoning, Chapter 915, Environmental Performance Standards, Subsection 915.06, Sustainable Development for Publicly-Financed Buildings by Deleting Certain Language and Adding a New Subsection 915.08, titled Sustainable Development for City-Owned Facilities. This concludes the reading for the Cablecast Public Hearing for Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this public hearing of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. My name is Councilman Kraus. I'll be chairing this afternoon's public hearing. I would like to begin, though, with our clerk, which is our tradition, to read the bill, the title of the bill in which we are here to discuss. So, Madam Clerk, may we have the purpose of Bill 1995?
Bill 1995. Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title IX, Zoning, Article, Zoning, Chapter 915, Environmental Performance Standards, Subsection 915.06, Sustainable Development for Publicly-Financed Buildings by deleting certain language and adding a new subsection 915.08, titled Sustainable Development for City-Owned Facilities.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We let the record reflect that we have been joined by Councilwoman Harris. Other members may join us momentarily as their schedules permit. We will move now to testimony from registered speakers. I ask that when you come to the microphone, you begin by giving us your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. Each speaker will be given, each registered speaker is given one, or three minutes, to address the council. The green light will indicate the start of those three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. Each speaker does have three minutes. If you registered in advance, after we have exhausted the list of registered speakers, we will open it up for testimony for those in the audience who would like to speak but did not register, and you will be given one minute to speak. So with that, I will begin with our first registered speaker, and that is Lucina Del Barbaro. I hope I said that at least close enough.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Lucina Del Barbaro. I live in Squirrel Hill. I also work at Conservation Consultants, a nonprofit dedicated to improving energy efficiency in homes, and both as a professional and also a happy owner of a net positive home.
Nice.
I support the net-zero-ready legislation proposed by the city. Net-zero energy buildings, in fact, pay for themselves when the premium, that is, pay for the premium invested in the building upfront when the operational cost of the building is taken into account over the duration of 20 or 30 years. This was proven by Rocky Mountain Institute in a study of 2007 for residential buildings, and, in fact, upfront cost for residential is considered higher than commercial buildings in this regard. The barrier to wider adoption of net-zero residential, or even commercial, is the lack of incentive for the builder who is not benefiting of those zero operational costs that the owner enjoys. And, of course, this wouldn't apply to the city buildings. So, other studies that I know of, a net-zero feasibility study by Efficiency Vermont from 2015 put the premium of becoming net-zero building at 7% for commercial buildings. Study from Massachusetts also showed that six types of buildings that they studied, including retrofits to net-zero buildings, broke even at some point over those 20 or 30 years, as far as the cost. But their environmental performance and their environmental impacts are far superior compared to the standard buildings. And while actual break-even point or break-even year may be different between different states because of different energy costs, different incentives, net-zero-ready buildings do break even. And municipalities are, in fact, positioned, the best positioned, to take this long view and then lead by example, help drive the deployment of these innovative technologies and achieve climate plan goals. I also want to quickly mention the city of Boston has a $10 million pilot across 37 facilities using Renew Boston Trust Fund to self-finance municipal building upgrades by monetizing their future savings. And such a model can be considered here for our city as well.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. I believe the first net-zero, thank you, I believe the first net-zero home was built in Pittsburgh, I want to say about five years ago, at a development known as The Muse by a developer named Ernie Soda, and it's been wildly successful. So, as you come to speak today, know that you have a friend and a supporter in me in supporting the legislation as proposed. We are also joined by Councilwoman Kail Smith. May I have our second registered speaker, Matt Mahoney? Hi, Matt, welcome. Thanks for coming.
Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you very much for having us here. I'm from the neighborhood of Greenfield, which I might add, recently had the McGee Recreation Facility upgraded in Zone 5, so we're seeing the benefits of energy efficiency or advancing sustainable living and enhancing quality of life for neighborhoods in Pittsburgh. So, I'm, I work with the Keystone Energy Efficiency Alliance. We're a Pennsylvania-based nonprofit organization dedicated to strengthening the energy efficiency industry. So since 2007, we've worked at the forefront of advancing Act 129, Pennsylvania's cornerstone energy efficiency law, and we are consistently a voice at the state on energy efficiency policy amongst the legislature and the Public Utility Commission. Our 65 members represent businesses across the Commonwealth working in the energy efficiency industry. Pennsylvania's energy efficiency industry is over 68,000 strong and grows each year with professionals working as engineers, construction workers, manufacturers, software developers, technicians, and so on. And those jobs can be found in counties across the state. Our members work to reduce strain on the electrical grid, increase energy system resilience, create jobs, and save money for electricity consumers. So Ordinance 1995 supports this growing energy efficiency workforce and strengthens the long-term resilience of the city's infrastructure. It's a positive step that builds on the city's efforts to achieve forward-thinking economic, environmental, and social guidelines and goals while demonstrating a clear and achievable goal or example of the benefits of energy efficiency. Building to net-zero energy standards is not a simple feat. Fortunately, though, a maturing energy efficiency industry is ready to provide cost-effective, off-the-shelf solutions for achieving the city's efforts to achieve the net-zero energy building standard. Pittsburgh already has the largest 2030 district of high-performance buildings in the state, and the Center of Sustainable Landscapes at Phipps Conservatory is one of the greenest buildings in the world. Pittsburgh is ready for the challenge to build, to achieve that new standard. KIA is also happy to see the implementation of this legislation. Will be informed by the analytical proficiency showcased in the city's first annual municipal building benchmarking report, which will allow the city to measure the impacts of energy efficiency across the city. So, thank you for the opportunity to express KIA's support for this positive legislative step towards achieving high-efficiency standards in the city and to see the city leading by example. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate you being here. Brandon Nicholson, you're next. Hi, Brandon, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of council. Brandon Nicholson, I'm in Shadyside. I've moved back to Pittsburgh about six or seven years ago because my wife was from here. We relocated. We were in Seattle doing high-performance buildings, and at the time, I assume there really wasn't a market here. I've been shocked to actually see about how much presence there actually has been for net-zero and high-performance buildings upon returning. I think one of the questions is, is the market ready? Are the professionals and general contractors able to be able to deliver these buildings? And because of efforts of the Green Building Alliance and other community, AIA, there really are enough practitioners here ready to do it. I think the biggest issue right now, a lot of the practitioners are going outside of the city, New York, DC, Seattle, Vancouver, because that's where the incentives have been, where the type of work has come. So, as much as Pittsburgh is, I think, taking a leadership role in this space, they're not the first. They can look to New York or to Vancouver for help. I think it's really good to actually see the city start to take legislation that will hopefully get the government properties or the properties that you control first to start to make the move to net-zero or high performance. The other cities that have done it first, New York about three years ago, Vancouver as well, then saw the private market follow. I think one of the other bigger challenges is, is there cost parity? And often, in the beginning, there's a bit of fear, and that does show in pricing, but when something like a city or utility or some incentive form tends to step up and push it in that direction, very quickly it turns out that the buildings actually cost the same or slightly less to build. So it's a really important step. I think the city is moving and doing it with their own facilities and real estate they control. Finally, I think moving away from LEED, which is really what this is, LEED was a checklist that really jump-started the green building movement. Those are now mostly best practices. And the one thing that LEED missed was an energy focus. And the shift of moving over to net-zero-ready or high-performance building does show the city's priority of paying more attention to carbon and more attention to energy. And I think it's a great step in the right direction. Thank you.
Yeah, Brandon, thank you. Joy Sabey. She was here earlier today, but I don't see Joy in the room now. Matt Junklaus. Hi, Matt, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Matt Junklaus. I'm from Boulder, Colorado, which I don't think is a county in Pittsburgh or a neighborhood, unfortunately. But I've spent a good deal of time here the last couple of months. I'm with Rocky Mountain Institute, a nonprofit think-and-do tank that's focused on the clean energy transition. We've been working really closely with the Sustainability and Resilience Team, Grant Irvin's team within the city, as well as the Department of Public Works. And we're incredibly excited about this legislation. We've been working with those teams through the generous support of the Heinz Endowments to put together this legislation, as well as some other pieces that we think can really move the needle toward the city's sustainable future. So this is a huge step that's been built on years and years of really hard work by Pittsburgh city government and by the green building community, I think, as the other speakers have already covered really, really well. So I won't belabor those points, otherwise just to say that Pittsburgh is really, you know, making a lot of news in this space, and we'd really like to see the city successful. And I think in order to see this as successful, there are a few other things that we need to address to continue building that momentum up instead of hitting a wall a few years down the line, just shy of the 2030 commitments that the city has made. I think those fall into two key areas. One is focusing on making investments based on the lowest lifecycle cost rather than the lowest first cost, which, right now, is the way that a lot of construction, language in the city code is written. So the idea here being with lowest lifecycle cost is that if you had the choice of buying a $200,000 home today that had significant needs to have everything ripped out and replaced next year, or the option to buy a $220,000 home that had everything in perfect working order and would save you those costs, those long-term costs, you'd probably make the second bet if you had the means. And the city is able to do this and would be able to save substantial, and I mean tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars in the long term if they made these higher investments upfront, recognizing that the city will be in these buildings 10, 20, probably more likely 100, 200 years down the line. So the second is to streamline procurement practices, which I could talk your ears off for hours about, but the main point there being that there are ways that we can better leverage city staff by relying on the private industry while still protecting the city, you know, from, from potential issues related to procurement. So looking at things like design-build or looking at streamlined construction management to address some of those issues. So, again, I'll just conclude by saying how excited we are to see this legislation moving forward, and we're looking forward to continuing to see Pittsburgh as a shining example of green buildings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it. Beth Eckenrode. Are you with us? You are. Hi, Beth, welcome. Thanks for being here.
I'm Beth Eckenrode. I live in Presto, Pennsylvania, and thank you so much for having the hearing and letting us all come and share our experiences. The destination to zero energy is the right destination, but the path to getting there can be comfortable or uncomfortable based on cost, based on strategy, and based on experience. Fortunately, in Pittsburgh, as Brandon was saying, we have the practitioners here that represent the breadth of experience using strategies that result in low-cost paths to zero energy. I'm going to focus my comments on passive house because how we choose to drive to zero energy is everything. Passive house is a global revolution that uses building science and physics to reach ultra-low energy for every building. Passive house is enabled by a high-performing building envelope, so the envelope of a building is what keeps the outside out and the inside in. The high-performing building envelope results in control over a building's environment, which is where energy comes in, right? So when you control the environment, you can reduce your dependency on energy. But the way a building organically reaches low energy is about trying to drive it first to getting your envelope properly set before you take on renewables. And once a building reaches its theoretical optimum performance by investing in the envelope, the use of renewables to reach zero energy is theoretically as low cost as possible. But a high-performing building envelope doesn't just control energy, doesn't just manage energy. Controlling the building envelope also creates the path to best-in-class indoor air quality. And here's what's super unique about Pittsburgh's interest in zero energy. If we reduce energy consumption and the emissions that go with that by 70 to 80% while improving indoor air quality to best-in-class, we'll be leaders in Pittsburgh for sure. Not many people are understanding the connection between building performance and the reduction of energy to increasing indoor air quality. Passive house is to energy what reset air is to indoor air quality, and we have one of, in fact, the only and first reset-certified cathedral in the world in East Liberty Presbyterian Church here in Pittsburgh. It's rare to find one initiative that targets a number of threads weaving together the UN's Sustainable Development Goals. By driving to zero energy using building science and physics, we can reduce fuel poverty and equilibate indoor air quality, and, maybe what's best of all, have the evidence and data to show that we met these goals during the operations of a building. So in summary, building strategies for low energy, check. Building strategies for ultra-high indoor air quality, check. Experienced arctex MEPs, commissioning agents, technology providers, and groups like GBA, check. Smart building technology and providers here local, check. An approach that every commercial building owner can afford, as Lucy mentioned, check. Shortened learning curve means less risk and a quicker return on investment, so there's no reason not to do this. Thank you.
Perfect. Great. Thanks, Beth. Rob Hoskin? Nope, not here? Okay, thank you. Eric Starkowitz? Hi, Eric, welcome. How are you?
Great, how are you? So I'm Eric Starkowitz. I'm the Director of Industry Relations at the Master Builders Association of Western Pennsylvania, and I'd like to thank city council for the opportunity to be here today and offer our support for the idea of building with performance in mind. Now, the MPA was founded in 1886, and we're a member-driven association. We're committed to the improvement of construction industry through excellent service in health and safety, government relations, labor relations, education, and training. Our membership accounts for more than 80% of the commercial construction projects built in Western Pennsylvania. The legislation that Mayor Paduto has introduced can be a positive step in the right direction for our city, but I encourage the city to reach out to us, as well as our partners at AIA Pittsburgh, and the Green Building Alliance, and many of the folks that you've heard speak already today, because we believe that you do need to establish some further guidelines on implementing net-zero on city-owned projects. The city's commitment to maintaining and enforcing net-zero best practices are of equal importance to the design and the construction of the buildings. It doesn't end with us. So while we have concerns about that, as well as the potential inclusion of small renovation projects in this legislation, we're confident that this is something that can be worked through conversation and possibly setting some minimum thresholds on renovation projects. The one thing that I can promise you is that the MPA members and our union tradespeople are fully capable and have the required expertise to complete these types of projects. And recent local net-zero projects completed by our members include the Forest Hills Municipal Building by Volpat Construction, the Frick Environmental Center by PJ Dick Incorporated, Tree Pittsburgh by Gendico, the Center for Sustainable Landscapes, which was just mentioned, by Turner Construction, and the Phipps Exhibit Staging Center by Masero Corporation. So, we have the members, we have the unions that can exceed your expectations. I don't want to, I want to take that off the table as something that you have to worry about if you're going to move forward, and we do appreciate your time and consideration on ways you can increase the performance of your buildings. And may I leave my comments?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Give them to the clerk. Thank you very much. I should have said this, if anyone did bring written comments and they wish to leave them with the clerk, you're welcome to do so. Let's see, next speaker, Gary Mosse here? Did I say that correctly? No? How about Hal Seville? Yep, okay. Hi, Hal, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. I'm Hal Saville. I'm with Energy Independent Solutions, EIS Solar, one of the largest solar companies operating here in Western PA. And in fact, many of the high-performance buildings that have been mentioned here today, like Frick, like Phipps, have solar projects from EIS. We've already looked at several projects for the city's solar opportunities, more heartened by the sustainability improvements that are being proposed. I've been reading a lot of books lately about how to manage the climate crisis, which, while somewhat scary, also point to some huge growth opportunities. And I want to share a couple of observations that are relevant to this legislation. First of all, we can't wait for federal or state government to create solutions to address climate crisis. Solutions need to come from local government institutions and our own citizenry. And to reduce the city's carbon footprint, a lot of the energy generation that's needed is going to have to come from solar because there just isn't a lot of wind power or other renewables available in the, within the city. With sustainable energy solution lifespans of 25 to 35 years, you, as a council, will need to find the courage to make important decisions which will impact the city government long after you've left office. You need long-term vision to think beyond the next budgetary cycle and make capital investments that are going to reduce operating expenses for decades to come. That's, that's how it works. Given the existing city properties, many will not be suitable for a lot of solar, so you need to maximize the efforts on those properties that are best suited to generate power and then share the benefit throughout the entire system of the city's buildings. There's several challenges to overcome in terms of process improvements that will be needed to speed the growth of solar within the city, including government, nonprofit institutions, commercial businesses, and residences. And here's a couple of suggestions. The permitting process for solar needs to be streamlined to reduce approval times and which delay construction schedules and add to project costs. The new computer system that's been implemented has actually slowed approvals. Local building and safety codes need to be interpreted reasonably to allow the maximum use of solar without sacrificing health or safety. This requires a greater understanding of how zoning and building regulations are applied to solar projects by code enforcement, public safety, and the utilities. And in fact, just this week, a change in setback requirements has adversely affected the design of a solar project for a city-owned affordable housing project, which, if it's not resolved, could actually kill the solar part of that project. And one other point I'll make is that green technology providers and organized labor really need to collaborate rather than compete for workforce dollars on publicly bid projects. In what's been referred to as the Blue-Green Alliance, you've probably heard of it, in order to get a living wage for all, really, you have to not have, just exclusively union labor.
Ms. Brown, have a seat. I'll chair the meeting.
Mr. Seville, your time has expired.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brown, I'll chair the meeting.
Chair, right.
Angelica? She's wearing me out. Angelica, welcome. Please come down.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Angelica Serani. I live in Regent Square, and I am here representing Green Building Alliance and our position in favor of the legislation. GBA is a nonprofit that's been working in Western Pennsylvania for 26 years to make every building and community sustainable so every person can thrive. We're fortunate for our strong partnership with the city, going back to our collaboration on Pittsburgh's first climate action plan. We are thrilled with the recent acceleration of progress toward healthy and high-performing places over the last few years, including Pittsburgh's building benchmarking legislation, the addition of performance-based development incentives in two zoning districts, and centering neighborhood plans on both the EcoDistricts framework and the UN's Sustainable Development Goals. The city of Pittsburgh has also recently committed all of its 120 buildings to the 2030 Challenge, calling for 50% reductions in energy use, water use, and transportation emissions by 2030 for existing buildings and carbon-neutral for new construction and major renovations. In order to meet these transformational goals and the goals of the third climate action plan, we believe that the public sector must adhere to the highest standards for building renovation and construction. The city's high standards for building performance will advance our regional market, creating healthier spaces for people while generating new clean energy jobs. Based on our work with the Pittsburgh 2030 District 750-plus buildings, we know that energy-efficient buildings also have significantly lower operating costs beyond initial energy savings, and this legislation will save city taxpayers significant, significant money in the long term, which can be used to support other critical programs. In order to implement this legislation at full scale, GBA is ready to support the city by training design and construction professionals in the highest standards, including passive house, LEED, and the Living Building Challenge, in addition to providing technical assistance to building owners and managers. GBA will continue to collect robust data about building performance and provide decision-makers and residents with measurable results on how to guide future planning and policy. This legislation is a critical first step in ensuring healthy buildings for all Pittsburghers, but equally, there are other key components to sustainability that must be collectively addressed. We look forward to working with the city as they develop design guidelines for water consumption, stormwater management, mobility, material selection, waste reduction, and other essential features. Thank you for prioritizing the health of all of our neighborhoods and providing safe places for residents to work, learn, and play. We believe this legislation will significantly improve the lives of those we all seek to serve. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Angelica. Thanks for being here. So that exhausts the list of registered speakers. Anyone here that wishes to add comment to this public hearing, you will be granted one minute. Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Oh, you can say that. Listen, my name is Yvonne F. Brown, and I'm speaking to all of you, and I want you to understand.
I have a minute.
The reason why I have attitude, they wrote a new thing, little tiny writing, because for all these years, over 22 years, I've been coming, you could sign up till 12. Well, the new lady came, wrote a little tiny writing, I have a bad eyesight, 10:30. I registered before 10:30 this morning. I did. This meeting is flawed. Staff needs a better understanding. Look, I'm serious. I have, I have a family, I have things that I have to do. I came down this morning to sign up to get free, I get one minute. Is it fair? Just like with you, sir. You did nothing wrong. You kept on talking. If I talk it, boom, Mrs. Brown, he hit the gavel. I turned around to talk to the students. I says, children, turn around, Ms. Brown, but I can be talking, and he goes and sit next to him, back off the man, and they get in all the conversation with my three minutes.
Okay, Ms. Brown, your minute is, your minute is, Ms. Brown?
You got a score worse than a woman. Oh, yeah, you was easy. See, soon as it said boom, but with you.
Ms. Brown?
Sorry, son. I just can't take it. I have 70 years on here.
Do we have anyone else that wishes?
I'm sorry.
Then act like. Is there anyone else that wishes to register comment at this public hearing? Please come up.
I'm on the right floor.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
But I understand Trump, he didn't, because he doesn't know the rules. He doesn't know who the law, I don't know about city council, but the new, and you.
Good night.
Very, very nasty.
Well, this is not, this is not going to continue. This is not going to continue. This is going to end. We are going to deal respectfully in this chamber. If she wishes to come in here again, she is going to abide by the rules. I apologize. Welcome.
Quite all right. You ready for me to begin?
Yes, please. This is out of control.
My name is Craig Stevenson. I'm with the Oros Group. I'm from Collier Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to mention to you guys that this is the right step. It's a no-regrets move. Pittsburgh is deep in resources for this kind of effort. You've heard from a lot of the resources already. I wanted to mention also that you have two people, Brandon and I, are both Board of Director members for the North American Passive House Network, and I brought some literature I'd like to leave here with today. This literature is created by the NAPHN, the North American Passive House Network, and it is the definition of net zero, the ideas around the strategies of how to get there. And there's also resources in here for communities, other communities that are taking that first step that you guys are doing right now, and the successes they had, how they had those successes. So, it's a great resource for lessons learned and how to do this and go to zero with your building. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Take that. Thank you, appreciate it. Mark? Anyone else wishing to, to address it, councilman, this afternoon? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing and open up to members if they wish to make comment. Okay, then with that, may I have a, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, councilwoman.
Sure. I actually have to read the legislation. I just saw it here this morning, and it was a small shortcut copy in my office, but it, it would be nice if every, if every building, we started from the bottom up, and we could make them all green. However, we have a lot of historic buildings, and a lot of buildings that I myself live in is, was built in the 1800s. So, I, I'm not sure how that mixes with this, and, and I don't want to put residents out of their way when they're, when they cannot possibly do something that might be part of this. And I do want to talk with you and also the building trades on where they're at. I know there was some information before that we had on heavy equipment. Heavy equipment, some of the pieces probably cost more than some of your homes do. And when someone buys a piece of it, that lasts for years and years. And sometimes there's ways that, that you can do something with that to help it be easier, but it's very hard. If, if people are working, example, heavy, and I'm only using as an example, heavy equipment, and they do not, that's like their whole livelihood, are those pieces of heavy equipment that they have? And they just don't turn them in, you know, in 10 years. They do last quite a bit longer than that. So, I want to, you know, ask some of the other people. I don't have a problem if we're working into something. I love to work into everything being green. What I don't like is, we talk we're being green, and then if you look behind the building right next to us, you'll see the walkways that the city has been putting in that are plastic. It's actual plastic, and on the packages, it says it causes cancer if it touches your skin. So, if you say, don't use a plastic straw, that sounds good, but if you're putting a whole bunch of plastic straws right in to the catch basins in the wintertime when you're scraping the street, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference. So, we have to look at everything. We can't just say straws when the city is now using a material such as that. Works good in states like Florida, but in states that are winter, it's much, much different. But thank you very much for your time coming down, and I hope someday we are green, but I also want to keep what we have historic and keep it that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilwoman. Thank you all for being here today. We appreciate your input, as always. I've said this before, I think it's my most favorite thing to do, is when we have public hearings and the public comes in to speak to the council directly. It's, it's government at its finest. So, I appreciate you taking the time, money of your day, to be here. As I said earlier, I'm, I'm a big supporter of the, of the concept and the idea, and will be voting in the affirmative on the legislation, and of course, encouraging my members to do so as well. So, thank you for being here. May I have a motion to adjourn our public hearing?